Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting the New York City Planning Commission to order. Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Here.
Velez.
Here.
Burgos.
Here.
Davis is absent. Wolf.
Here.
Gaines.
Here.
Moore.
Here. It's noted we have a quorum. Minutes from the previous meeting, everybody have a chance to review them. Are there any changes? Hearing on is your motion to accept.
Any motion to accept this meeting? Minutes?
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call. Aye.
Velez.
Aye.
Burgos.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Gaines.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye. Everyone have a chance to review the zoning hearing board minutes? Any notations you'd like to make? Any unfinished business and new business? Our first case is an amendment to the zoning, and we'll hear from staff real quick, and then I'd like to have the representative step forward.
Okay, so on the agenda it says 101 East Springersbury Avenue, but it's not associated with any address. It's just a proposed text amendment to Article 1303.07 RS1, Single Family Detached Residential Districts 1304.02 in Section 7.17, Rooming House Providing for the Amendment of the Definition of a Single Housekeeping Unit. So I put the actual text amendment up there that I just got in so that y'all can look at that, and we do have someone here representing. I'll just gonna let her go ahead and speak.
Could you step forward? Oh, sorry.
I'm here.
Could you provide your name for the record, please?
Sure. My name is Erica Towns, and I'm representing the Springdale Neighborhood Association. Before the commission is a proposed text amendment. It's not associated with any property, but I see there is a property listed on the agenda. Text amendment does two things. It clarifies the definition of a single-family detached dwelling and also a rooming house. Currently, there is no definition for a single-family detached dwelling. There is a definition for rooming house. The Neighborhood Association believes that it's been subject to some misinterpretation, so we provided clarifying language in this ordinance. Single-family detached dwelling, it's the only principal use by right in the RS1 zoning district, so I guess I'll give you a short summary of what the proposed definition would be. It's a dwelling that's designed for and occupied exclusively by a single housekeeping unit. Single housekeeping unit is defined as persons living together within a dwelling as a single not-for-profit unit sharing household responsibilities such as meals, chores, and expenses. And then it goes on to identify factors that would not include a single housekeeping unit. Those factors include occupants each having separate written or leasees, locking devices on doors, food storage and cooking utilities that are segregated, and all of the factors are listed in the ordinance. So that's the proposed text amendment. It applies for the RS1 zoning district. And again, it's clarifying two definitions: single-family detached dwelling and rooming house.
Can you tell me what the impetus was behind doing this?
Yes. So the RS1 zoning district, there's only two in the city right now. Currently, you're starting to see a trend in rooming houses and for-profit rooming situations in the district, and so that's the purpose of sort of clarifying what constitutes a single housekeeping unit and what does not. We don't believe that the purpose, according to the comp plan and according to the ordinance itself, is to have these de facto rooming houses. The purpose is for single-family units. And so the definition that you see in the proposed text amendment, that's the definition that has been provided by the Supreme Court after the zoning ordinance was adopted, so I just took language straight from the case law.
That was the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And I do want to highlight one typo. So it says in ordinance amending Article 1303.07, that's the older zoning ordinance, your solicitor noted to me that I referenced the older zoning ordinance, so it's 1303.09, not 07.
This is only to affect RS1 districts, correct?
Correct.
So as it stands, the rooming houses in the other residential districts, that would remain the same other than your definition of a rooming house itself?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions? Anyone from the public that would like to address this?
There are some neighbors in the RS1 zoning district.
I have one volunteer.
Okay.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Heather Linecker, and my husband and I moved to York. This is our final resting place, so to speak. We looked all over the state of Pennsylvania for a neighborhood that had families and old-fashioned type values, et cetera, and we started focusing in on Springdale actually in 2021 and made a very large move from Texas to Pennsylvania, and the neighborhood's been everything that we dreamed of our entire lives: welcoming, diverse. It's a beautiful, wonderful place, very cohesive, many social events during the year, and just old-fashioned neighbors helping one another. Many of the residents have lived there for 50 years or more. My husband and I are newer, but like I said, what drew us was that old-fashioned sense of a neighborhood. And there are some who are trying to change that, and we've seen what it has done to surrounding streets around Springdale, and we just don't want that to happen here. It's a good place. It's a nice group of people, and we just want it to remain single-family dwellings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Please step forward.
My name is Jean Buckingham. I live directly across from 101 East Springersbury Avenue. The property which I think the amendment is being sought to effect. I didn't really come prepared to speak tonight because I had been given the impression that there wasn't going to be any chance for comments, so I may, my remarks may sound more like they should be addressed to the zoning board itself, if you'll excuse that. Zoning is meant to protect property owners and in turn the city itself. RS1 zoning is the most restrictive zoning in the code for a reason: to protect the very desirable sections of an older city, reassurance to prospective homebuyers to preserve the character of the oldest houses. The present owner of 101 East Springersbury Avenue knew beforehand of the house being restricted to allow no more than two unrelated individuals in an RS1. And actually, I'm not even sure about that. I believe the strictest interpretation of RS1 is that no unrelated people are allowed in the dwelling. I believe I'm right about that. Past experience taught us that exceptions are a sure way to change a neighbor's character, a neighborhood's character. It becomes very easy to receive exceptions when one has already been granted. You know, the slippery slope. We, my husband and I, lived in an area north of York College for 23 years on West Springersbury Avenue. The neighborhood was zoned RS2, but contiguity to York College meant that single-family houses were transformed into apartment houses and often fraternity houses, and we received no enforcement of codes by the city during that time. We were there for 23 years. We endured beer parties and harassment for years with no redress from the city. You can imagine that we are sort of suffering a type of PTSD right now, thinking that the same situation could start to happen in our neighborhood. And I don't like it when people bring up the comparison with "not in my neighborhood," the NIMBY, you know, "not in my neighborhood" outlook. That's not what this is about. As I said previously, this is about preserving something that is really important for our city for a lot of reasons. Our former block of 200 West Springersbury between South Pershing and South Manor, if you guys can imagine that right now, between South Pershing and South Manor, is a perfect example of that slippery slope. Six perfectly good residences are gone, replaced by college housing, which is not tax-bearing. It looks beautiful, but what was there before, of course, we felt was beautiful, and what's there now does not contribute to the taxes of the city. The only hardship to this owner was self-inflicted. I spoke with the previous owner who said that the buyer was informed of the zoning restrictions against renting or borders. The owner purchased knowing that she would be contravening a law if she operated the property as any form of a boarding house. We have watched for how many, maybe six months, eight months, the transformation of 101 West Springersbury, East Springersbury, and there was no question what was going to be installed: numerous appliances, taking down of walls, et cetera. Anyway, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I will go before the zoning board as well, but thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Steve Jones. I'm from Saxon and Stomp, and I represent the horrible woman who owns 101 East Springersbury. She is someone who has come to town. She's worked with the zoning office, and there's a lot of misconceptions and misunderstandings about what is actually was known, what happened, and what moved forward, but that's not what we're here to talk about. We're here to talk about this evening about whether or not there should be an amendment to the zoning ordinance. And I would like to point out that, you know, things are getting more expensive. Housing costs are getting more expensive, and these very nice houses, which they are very nice houses, I helped the owner at the corner of Springersbury and North George Street several years ago get a number of variances and some exceptions from the city to do a condo unit there. They've turned those around. That could have been six units at one point in time. I helped Mr. Kuner get his approval for his funeral home at the corner as well from the city, and it is a beautiful area of the city. Unfortunately, it's not quite as inexpensive as it once was, and it's more difficult to maintain properties on a single income. And when you start changing zoning ordinances to make it such that a single segment of the population can afford to live there, you start running dangerously close to running afoul of the Fair Housing Act and other requirements. I know the city is very, very tuned into that and doesn't want to do that. So I will say that you need to take this under consideration very carefully, because this has wider range of impacts, even to the RS1 district. I get it. They want to maintain their neighborhood and what it looks like, but if you go by 101 East Springersbury, it still looks like a house. It still looks like the house it was. It's no different if someone has two friends living with them. If you have a family that has four kids and they all have a car, right? You've still got six cars on the street. So I'd like you to take it in a wider scope and look at this as a whole when you make a consideration on a recommendation. And I guess my other question would be is, I know there's some thought that this is going to come before the city council on November 18th, but I don't believe, is that for the first reading, or how would that work, Nancy?
So it will go to city council, but it's gonna have to sit.
Okay.
You know, for a meeting, and I will have it on by noon on Wednesday to Diana.
But it wouldn't be up for final consideration on November 18th? Is that correct?
No, not that I, as far as I know, no, it will not. And just as I was gonna state to the lady who just got up, it will not go to the zoning hearing board. It goes from here to city council.
Right. So, but there would have to be the publication in the newspaper at least twice before the public hearing can take place?
Correct. That's why, I'm just comparing it to the last one that we had for an amendment to the zoning ordinance as well. Correct, yes.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Craig Zumbren. I live at 146 Irving, about three blocks from the property that's been discussed most recently. I came to York 29 years ago to be the head of a office called the Bureau of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections, and in that job I was zoning officer and the building official, and I supervised all the health and property inspections. So I have some immediate experience with the older ordinances, and I participated in the public planning sessions for the most recent two sets of ordinances that we currently are operating under. And all the time that I've been involved with the city and all the planning meetings I've attended and all the commitments made by the consultants to the city for the creation of the amended plans and zoning ordinances, RS1 districts were simply and clearly defined as single-family detached. There wasn't a lot of room where one would be able to misinterpret that, and if one was buying a property through a licensed realtor, that would have to be pointed out in the disclosures. And so one who would be buying a property in an RS1 district would know what that required. And the city has fairly clear requirements for doing any zoning amendment to change a property's character or use. Similarly, if you're going to do any kind of modification of the interior of a property so that you're removing doors, walls, windows, oftentimes a city building official will make the call that the property then has to undergo either an engineering or an architectural evaluation so that the property is assuredly safe, not only for the future occupants, but for the investment of the owner as well as for the neighbors. I'm simply here to give you some historical perspective and my understanding of what the city has held in high regard and protection of an area of the city in the south and an area in the city in the north where there are only permitted uses of single-family detached housing. I was also in the housing and community development field for 50 years, and as the head of the city's housing authority, which served the entire county, I can assure you that the references made to the Fair Housing Act are grossly incorrect. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
My name is Mike Johnson. I live in the Springdale neighborhood at 147 Marion Road, and I have just a couple of quick things to say. It's interesting, some of the previous speakers, one was mentioning the period of, long period of time that people live in Springdale. We actually, I moved in as, I was just a young kid, but I moved in 52 years ago, and I'm still in the same house that I moved into and have really enjoyed the neighborhood quite a bit. But that's, I think you all are familiar with the area, and I just wanted to point that out. You might also be interested to know, I think if I was understanding the reference that was made over here to some other large homes that had gone through the process of getting a variance and so forth to have condominiums, I was actually the person who developed that property. And it's fascinating to see. I won't spend much time on it, other than to say, we did get variances. I got signatures from 35 owners. Everybody in a two- or three-block area around felt that this property, rather than be torn down, which was what was to be done for a parking lot, I think for the church, fortunately it was in Harb, so it had to go through that process as well. But in any case, the variances that we got were supported by the neighbors, and they were doing that to save a property. And the interest, really interesting thing, I think, is you talk about single-family homes, and you talk about the large homes are too big for single families. Well, we actually subdivided the, that large home, it's a 10,000-square-foot home at the corner of Springersbury and George there, across from the church, catty-corner from the funeral home. In any case, we subdivided it into two very large, well, it's not really row houses, but into two units. The folks who came and bought the house converted it back, a 10,000-square-foot home, like God knows who would live in that, but in any case, they did, and they are a single family living in that house. So it goes to show that even when neighbors supported the change, it was also supported by the people who bought the house. So there definitely is a demand for single-family homes in York City, not just in Springdale, but there are a couple of other areas, Farside and so forth, that are single-family as well. So we're really here to, all I want to say is, I'm glad that there's some clarification being presented to the ordinance, because it was, I think, confusing, I assume, for the zoning officer who made the interpretation that this use would be allowed, but these changes should clarify the fact of what, it should be self-evident, but what a single family and what a, what a single housekeeping unit, that's really a better way to put it, really means. So in any case, I assume we'll go through the rest of the process, but we thank you for hearing what we have to say. And we have a block party once every year, if you're interested. We block off the whole triangle area there in the middle of the neighborhood, and, oh my God, we have 100 people there, or more, and kids and everything. So in any case, we like it, and we hope it will help us keep it as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just have, I don't know if I mentioned this, but there's only two RS1 zoning districts left in the city. I think what you're seeing in this zoning district is an erosion of that. I mentioned this in the proposed amendment, but I think this text amendment is consistent with the comprehension, comprehensive plan. The plan seeks to, quote, "decrease trans vacancy and improve tenure" in the RS1 zoning district. That's in Chapter 7 of the comp plan. So I think the proposed text amendment is needed. And I can answer any other questions that you might have.
So to clarify, this is just amending the text and not necessarily recommending any actions be taken other than
Correct.
the ordinance amendment?
Correct. It's just amending the text
Okay.
to clarify what the definition is of a single-family detached dwelling.
Okay, thank you.
Are there currently rooming houses in the RS1 district?
Say that again?
Are there currently any rooming houses?
No. And the house that they're pertaining to, everything they're saying is not happening. They didn't tear down no walls. They didn't take no doors off or anything. I went with the inspector to go through the house personally because of all the phone calls we was getting from them. It passed inspection. All the kitchenettes and everything that was in there, we made them get rid of it. So the house is open to be a single-family house with two ladies living there. That's it. There's nothing else going on there. All the construction equipment everybody seen there and everything, it was just restoring a lot of the walls, painting and everything, getting the house back to the original form, so. And they put in the kitchen on the third floor. That's the only difference.
Ms. Towns?
Hi.
So in this wording, in our definition of single-family, would two unrelated people be affected by the change in wording?
I'm sorry?
Would two unrelated people dwelling together, would that not be considered a single unit or a single-family unit?
A single-family unit. So you could have two unrelated people living together, but they would have to operate not-for-profit. They would have to operate as a single family. I think I've laid out factors that would constitute what a single family is. I have other thoughts, but regarding, I think, what's going on on the property, that's something that I think the neighbors would dispute, what's going on on the inside. I think we've all seen the listings, or the neighbors have all seen the listings online on VRBO, and, but that's to be decided on another day. I think what we're here for is the proposed text amendment, and I hope I answered that question.
It does.
Okay.
Because I mean, I would, like, personally, I can't speak for anybody else on the board, but like, let's say I have a roommate. We're not related. We work together, but we live as a single family.
Correct.
We share everything. There's no locks on the doors.
Yep.
So I just wanted to make sure.
That would be a single, that would constitute a single family under this language, right? But if you had separate locking devices on your bedroom doors, if you, you know, for renting out rooms, for example, that's starting to not be a single housekeeping unit. Does that make sense?
Chris, do you have your microphone on?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Anyone else in the public that would like to address this amendment? Nancy?
Mike?
Are we
Yes.
voting to recommend?
Yes, you can recommend approval or denial that before it goes to council from Planning Commission.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to recommend this amendment as worded to the city council? Anyone have a recommendation?
So just to clarify, this is like the other one was the other week that we had. You don't, you can recommend either approval as it, as the text amendment is worded, or you can recommend denial, or you can recommend approval with changes if you want to. So I'm just gonna put in here exactly, you know, what you want to do.
[inaudible]
Is that your motion?
Yeah.
Is there a second? Motion, motion dies due to lack of second. Anyone make, anyone want to recommend approval? In this case, Nancy, what happens?
I don't know. Sorry, I just have to be honest. I don't know.
Would this be the same scenario, like?
So it probably would be, it would probably be this scenario. I mean, I can check with Fred to make sure, but it's probably gonna be that Planning Commission had no recommendation at all as it moves forward to city council.
What was your question?
Can the definition be reread? Just, we heard it and then we had discussion this one.
Do you have a copy?
Yes.
Okay. All right, the definition of a single-family detached dwelling is a dwelling that is designed for and occupied exclusively by a single housekeeping unit as defined in Article 1304.02. A single housekeeping unit means persons living together within a dwelling unit as a single not-for-profit unit, sharing household responsibilities such as meals, chores, expenses, ownership or tenancy of the premises, and whose use of the dwelling, and who use a dwelling as their permanent residence as opposed to using the dwelling on a purely transient basis. Single housekeeping unit does not include occupants of a dwelling who rent or occupy a space separately and do not share living arrangements or operate as a common household. The following indicators shall constitute prima facie evidence that a dwelling is not being operated as a single housekeeping unit. One, occupants each having separate written or oral leases or rental agreements with the owner, locking devices on individual bedroom doors or otherwise restricted access within the dwelling, occupants changing on a regular basis such as occupants that are transient as opposed to permanent, food, storage, cooking, or utilities being segregated by occupants, or other factors demonstrating lack of shared household structure. So that definition that's been fleshed out, I pulled that straight from the Supreme Court. So that's how the Supreme Court would define a single housekeeping unit. I've just put it into the I've just put it into the ordinance, so there's no room for doubt as to what it is. And I think these factors, well, I know these factors came from that case to sort of guide the zoning officer as to what constitutes single housekeeping and what does not.
So the, the sections in the proposed ordinance change itself in italics, that's the language you added?
Correct.
Once again, I'll ask if there's a motion to, to recommend approval.
Nancy, the, the, under the section, it says about the rooming house aspect, that's not actually what we're asking to amend, it's specifically 1303 dot 09, is it? It'd be both, okay.
So it's adding the definition of single-family here, and adding a definition of rooming house to the rooming house ordinance.
Okay.
Yes.
I was like, just looking at it at the same time. So it's, it's a text amendment to the single, RS1, single-family dwelling definition. Sorry, just took a minute there, I had to get all of that out of there.
Well, I'll make, make a motion to recommend approval of the text amendment to Article 1303 dot 09, RS1, single-family detached residential unit, and 1304 dot 02, in Section 7 point 17, Rooming House Providing the Amendment of the Definition of a Single Housekeeping Unit.
A second.
I have another question.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion?
Yes. Just to play devil's advocate, regardless of the change of language, and not, please don't take this the wrong way, regardless of the change in language, if they still come to us for, or zoning for an exception, or a variance, rather, that's still possible under this, either way, correct?
If 101 Spring and Sperry, if she wanted to get?
I'm, I'm not talking about any property in general, like, this is a generalized statement. Like, while we may, you know, have a part in how ordinances are written and discussed, especially when it comes to zoning, even though we're putting this length, or we would recommend to adopt this language, if somebody would want to change something in that neighborhood, they would still follow the same process.
Correct, yes, they would have to come through zoning.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Okay, I didn't hear who seconded it. Oh, yes, Ms. Fergus, okay, sorry. Johnson?
Aye.
Velez?
Aye.
Fergus?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Gaines?
Aye.
Moore?
Mr. Moore, what was your vote?
Excuse me?
Yes, you may. Motion is, is adopted. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson, do I, does he need to give a reason? Or no? Okay.
Well, I think, I, I don't, I don't, I think the wording is just a definition, the process doesn't change. So in this, in this
Well, it's the Supreme Court.
Right, there's
You're welcome to stay, if you want, stay for the rest of the meeting.
You can stay for the rest of the meeting, you're allowed to.
Our next case is 550 West College Avenue, first one here from staff.
So this is the towns at York Creek, and it is the last waiver. We approved the three prior to this, so we're ju, you're just making a recommendation on the waiver as it reads there underneath the 550 West College Avenue.
Hello?
That's me. I'm Jeff Stow with Warehouse, representing the owners on this waiver request. I did, I did bring some plans to simplify what you're looking at.
Okay.
Probably better than the little ones.
Yeah, this is older, in color. So, this is the units 38 and 50, on the right side, just those two units, your, your engineer had a comment about adding sidewalk
These two, yeah.
to the side of those two units. The room, the side setbacks are five feet, so if you have a four-foot wide sidewalk in a curb, it's putting the sidewalk right up against the townhouse. So we have traffic directed to go to the left and up to Cook's Lane, out to West College, where other handicap ramps are. Cook's Lane does not have any handicap ramps along that side of the road. So we're asking for a waiver not to put sidewalk just beside those two units, that is it.
As currently designed, there are no curbs or sidewalks, it's units 27 and 39, correct? At the other end?
There are, there are sidewalks.
Are there sidewalks?
Yeah, there's sidewalk in front of the unit, and then goes up the Green Street sideline on the left. So it's kind of sending the pedestrians up to where the handicap ramps are on West College to get around. And then we tried to keep our roads wide enough so fire apparatus can get around those roads and those tight circles. So that's why the units and the setbacks are so tight with everything.
And that was what, one of the things that we discussed in the pre-development meeting, where we have the fire department there, to make sure that they can get the apparatus in there in the event of a fire. So he's correct in saying that they had to kind of squeeze some things and kind of rearrange a little bit, so that that, that's very important, that they can get their apparatus in there.
So we'll have the, the green space beside those units, correct? Any questions? Anyone from the public that would like to address this case? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to recommend approval.
Sidewalk waiver again.
Yeah. Make a motion to approve the sidewalk waiver required on streets for subdivision and land development ordinance, Part 13, Title III, Articles 1336, in Section 133603, of the requirement that curbs and sidewalks are required on both sides of the street and should be installed by the developer in accordance with the standards and specifications of the city edging hearing department for the towns at York Creek final plan.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Johnson?
Aye.
Velez?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fergus?
Aye.
Gaines?
Aye.
Moore?
Motion is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next case is 31 dash 2025 dash Z dash S E, 646 West Market Street.
The applicant is Dominic Chapman, doing business on behalf of Mr. De Shields, right here. Dominic Chapman, address is 29 East Princess Street, York, PA 17401. Owner is Lockwood Property Holdings LLC, 16 Bath Asher Row, Sinkin' Springs, PA 19608, this is it. Zoning District is UN1, urban mixed residential commercial district. The summer applicant would like to open a commercial recreation facility for billiards at the property at 646 West Market Street. Variance, when applicant sees a variance to allow commercial recreation facility used, as defined in Section 1304 point 01 dash 4 point 03 point 006, for the property at 646 West Market Street in the UN1 zoning district. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the variance to allow the commercial recreation facility for the property at 646 West Market Street.
Okay, so if you note in your, on the agenda, it is listed as a special exception. I have checked with our end of it, and you can strike through that and make it variance, and you can make a recommendation this evening, so that the applicant does not have to come back through planning. Again, he will need to be rescheduled, because it was advertised for zoning as a special exception, so he will not be going to the November 20th zoning hearing board, but he will be rescheduled for the December hearing board, zoning hearing board. But you may make a recommendation now, and then he will just need to go come in December.
Is the applicant present? Could you step forward and provide your name?
James De Shields.
And what are you proposing here?
Pool hall.
Will there be gaming machines as well?
Mr. De Shields, I think, are you talking about the gaming, the Pennsylvania lottery gaming machines?
No, um
Oh, or
The malls and, you know, whatever. Kind of like the, the game store on, what is it, West Market Street? Arcade type, arcade type of gaming, right? This is previously a commercial space? In your photograph, the, the games that are in the photograph, those are similar to what you were going to have there?
Yes, sir.
Anyone have questions? Anyone from the public that would like to address this case? Could you step forward and provide your name, please?
Excuse me. My name is Rich Monroe. I'm a combat disabled veteran. If you know y'all veterans, you know pool halls are very good to us, them overseas, USO, we used to always have a place to go. I'm a member of the Post 5156 of American Legion, and also the VFW 556. And every facility does not have a pool table. And I hope that, speaking for some of the veterans, that we have a place to go, a pool hall, and we used to play ping pong and all those things and that nature. If you pass this, we'd be grateful for the veterans of my age era. We don't have to, no place to go, so we can communicate, talk, war talk, or even Veterans Affairs. That's what I'd say.
Thank you, sir. Well, as a fellow veteran and age grouping, I agree.
You know what, Tom?
Yes.
Kind of was a pool hall block away, like, I grew up playing pool there.
Currently?
No, where Joe Tulub is at now, used to be a pool hall, so I learned how to play, so it's only a block away.
Anyone have any other comments? Do we have a motion to, regarding the variance for the pool hall?
I make a motion to recommend approval of a variance for recreational facility, billiards room, found in Section 1304 dot 01 dash 4 dot 0 dot 006, for the property at 646 West Market Street.
A second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Johnson?
Aye.
Velez?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fergus?
Aye.
Gaines?
Aye.
Moore?
Motion is, is accepted. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So I'll send you everything for next month and everything, get you ready for that meeting, all right?
Any further business?
Thank you very much.
Anything else, Nancy? We stand adjourned.